We're not meeting until middle of next month.
Yeah, we could, Kate.
Um, I still was trying to advise, which now you are.
Oh, what, what, what?
Nanosecond.
Wait, wait, what? Okay, welcome everyone to our council meeting and we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
By the United States of America and to the great public for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you folks, uh, roll call, Kate.
Here.
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 Well, so.
Here.
Here.
All right, thank you. Okay, on to our audience of citizens or audience of police. It's a police.
Like, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Drew O'Leary, been officer at Berlin for about five years and also the UKV president.
Can you bring up the microphone after, please?
Sorry about that.
Yeah, that's good.
Um, as most of you know, the police department is currently undergoing a renovation project. We're getting a new Sally pour along with a couple other different rooms and stuff. One of the main things that I think our police department has been most excited about is that we're getting supposed to be getting a new fitness space gym area down in there. Construction's been going on for roughly about a little over a year now. Probably about a couple of months ago, some of us started asking around the police department, what was going on? The space, the gym equipment and everything like that. After probably a couple of months, it took us to get the further information. It's been realized that the gym equipment was not placed, the funding for it was not placed into the planning process, the budgeting. Um.
You got the short straw tonight, I see.
So last week I went to the Public Buildings Commission meeting, they kind of acquired further information about what happened along the planning process. It was told that it was never included in the process. So the reason I came here tonight was basically, um, I have letters ran out to each council member on behalf of the union that I wrote myself. You can pass them down, everything like that. Um, kind of details out the process. Uh, we have an estimated quote in there. We've gone to several different quotes on gym equipment. You know, one of the biggest reasons why we want this is, I bet, like I said, I've been here for five years. Previously, we had a little gym space in our alleyway in our old range. Before that, we never really had a gym space. It's kind of been something that a lot of our officers have been asking for. We were told this early on in the process, they were getting a new gym space. So it kind of made us very excited currently to come to find out that the room is going to be empty and some, some words have been traveled that the union was going to be responsible to pay for it.
Yes.
That doesn't seem to be the case from our union standpoint right now that we're not paying for gym equipment. I can just be totally blunt about that.
Yeah, I, I thought that I, I, all I can say is I talked to Don on public building and I, he, he said that was the promise in the beginning and I'm not saying we got to stick to anything, but I'm just saying that I think that's what might have happened here. Yeah.
Yeah, I spoke with John Flynn, who's our.
Yes, yes.
President now, it has been for the past 10 years.
What did he say?
Um, he's unaware of any conversations that's ever been had. He's been our new president for the past 10 years.
Yeah.
He never had a conversation.
Yeah, I don't know where that.
That was never a part of it.
Yeah, I don't know where that came from. Yeah.
Unsure of where that came from.
Yeah.
I got a little history. I've been here a long time and when we were talking about the new police station on Farmington Avenue, the equipment came up. And at that time, I think Kerma was our insurance company and they had an issue with the town owning that equipment in case someone got hurt on that equipment. They didn't want the liability. So I think this has become a carryover from
that design. Could be.
And now we have a new insurance company, so maybe it doesn't apply anymore. I don't know, but I think that's where the confusion came.
In the Public Buildings Commission had mentioned to me as well, when I went that night, that liability seemed to be an issue.
Yeah.
The town owning the equipment.
Okay.
What I did, um, I reached out, uh, officer, I know that works at Middletown Police Department, he's involved with their union. They have a gym as well. There, what they do with the town is they created a waiver liability form that signed off. I actually have copies of it that Sergeant Kelly kind of tinkered to the town of Berlin, just a mock-up template of what a waiver would look like if you guys want to look at that as well.
Yeah.
Um, if that seemed to be an issue, I would hate to kind of for that to be the dead stop. If it is, it is, but if there's some way to talk about it and try to figure out some conclusion with it.
We'll figure it out.
Um, but basically the reason like I came here tonight was liability was something that was brought to us and also the funding.
Okay. And that, that was in public building, right? That's where that.
That was what was told to me, yeah, last week.
Okay. Well, we'll certainly have our town attorney look at the liability issue.
Yeah, I can get them a copy for sure.
Yeah, and, uh, so what, what, and what are we talking here? Is, is that the?
Space in the renovation?
There is now.
Yes.
Basically, the centerpiece of the new.
It's all ready to go.
It's going to be an empty.
I will tell you that it will stay empty.
So do we have any equipment whatsoever?
We have a couple pieces of previous equipment that we moved out of our old space, but it's not much. I think you elaborate.
Was there stuff in the old space? Oh, okay, okay.
Dumbbells and maybe a bench.
Okay.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Okay. No, no, I just.
Couple dumbbells up there.
I think you had much, but I wasn't sure.
No, we don't. We don't have much.
I'll look into it and see.
It's not a gold gym. You don't have the gold gym equipment hidden anywhere? All right, all right.
Officer Larry, one question for you. Beside Middletown having a waiver for their equipment, did you check with any other towns? Do they have, uh, how are other towns functioning?
I haven't checked with any other towns at the Public Buildings Commission. Um, Mr. Humes had mentioned that Duquesne and Police Department recently just kind of went through a similar situation as to us. Trying to go back and forth with the town to inquire about the funding liability was an issue for them. And he had said that they had drafted up some sort of waiver, kind of similar to this and resolved.
I was just wondering if there's anybody locally under the same kind of circumstances inside Middletown.
Rocky Hill, maybe?
New England, Weatherfield, Glastonbury, Newington.
Just curious.
Portland.
Portland, Portland.
Cause Newington, uh, when they redid their town hall and their police station, maybe they came under the same, the, under the same type of circumstances.
I know they recently got a new gym. I just haven't inquired about what their liability or if they have a waiver.
Yeah, well, well, Jeff, so Jeff, uh, what do you, what do you think about this? Just off the top of your head, I know we'll look at it, but.
It really comes down to what the carrier wants.
Okay.
Um, because you know waivers.
I know.
Sometimes are not enforceable, um, depending upon the foreseeability of the particular injury. But really it comes down to the carrier because we don't want to be in a position where we agree to some kind of a waiver or an MOU and then the carrier, if there's a claim denies coverage. So the carrier needs to really weigh in on it.
Okay.
I mean, you, you can do it that way, but ultimately we want to make sure that we don't have any coverage issues. So really it comes down to whatever the carrier is comfortable with, I'm fine with.
One of the questions I know that our unions had throughout this whole process and once we kind of found out about the liability issue of it was what does the town do for the gym equipment that's down at the community center? Is there liabilities or waiver forms set in place for people that go down there? Just for, just so we're aware of what the process is.
Yeah.
Specific to the police department.
Right.
If there's, if anyone has an answer for that, I don't know.
I don't know if we.
It's recreational equipment you're talking about, right? So there's a specific statute that gives municipalities some immunity from negligence claims arising out of people using equipment for recreational purposes.
That covered the, um, like the gym at the high school too?
That was.
Yeah, yeah, because they got quite the gym there.
Different statute. That's an educational use.
Okay.
Could we approach the carrier and add a rider to our policy? Maybe it might be a simpler way out.
It's just, it's just a conversation with the carrier to find out what they'd be comfortable with.
Okay, yeah, so that's what we'll do. We'll, we'll start talking to them.
Absolutely.
And then, uh, we'll start pinching pennies and figure out, it, it's just.
Big sale.
So the number that I put in there is just an estimate.
Okay.
Far we've received two different quotes.
Okay.
Um, one's a little pricier, one's lower, so.
Okay.
Lower.
But both quotes are, feature the same equipment that we asked for.
Okay, what do you, what do you, what do you put, what are you doing in there? Are you doing some free weights, I assume, and some other stuff?
Free weights, some cardio machines, some lifting machines.
Yeah.
It's a good sized space, but it's not a gold gym, so we have to, we have to figure out what we're doing.
Yeah.
That's what we had to as well, so we can definitely go down that road if the carrier and stuff strains out.
Okay, so let's start with that. Uh, Jeff can start that conversation and, and with the town manager and and then we'll figure it out from here.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll work on it. We'll, we'll figure out. I'm sure there is a solution.
Awesome.
For you guys, ladies, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming. Phew, that's all it was? Okay, that's not bad. Okay, that's good. I appreciate you guys. So how's the new renovation looking? Good, right? It's gonna be, gonna be a lot better for you, you folks, I hope.
Yeah.
It should be, I'm sure, compared to what you had, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's good. Finally got that done. We're happy we got that done for you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
So we'll just wrap up this piece here. I'm sure it shouldn't be a problem. We'll figure it out. All right. Okay, um, any, anybody else in the audience of city, citizens? I don't know if anybody's online, Kate, nobody? Okay. That's good. Um, we gotta get home. It's their cooking turkey, so we can't stay here too long. Uh, mayor's update, just real quick, the only way, the only thing I wanted to update was, uh, thank you, thank you folks.
Thank you.
We'll figure it out. We'll, we'll get in touch with this soon.
Thank you, sir.
Very soon. All right.
Guys, I'm gonna stay for the rest of the meeting, huh?
No, you don't want to stay? You got something better to do? Yeah. Anything, right?
See that a lot.
Just, uh, yeah, right. They should have stayed. They should have stayed. Yeah. So, um, uh, ju- just Brightfeed, just a quick update since it's always big on our, our minds here, of course. Uh, the other, last week, I think it was Thursday, uh, just happened to go there, met the manager, Dan, myself and, uh, another someone from the Board of Finance and, and there was some, there was, I think why we went there was there was a posting of a video of some noise, um, on there. Uh, you know, that they heard, had heard the night before from Brightfeed, they assumed. So we were talking to the manager and actually what he said they were doing that night, which was Thursday night last week, um, they were gonna, uh, lower the velocity of the fans, which would change the pitch, I guess. So, uh, so we didn't see any other complaints after they, they were doing it that night. I think at five o'clock, they were doing some maintenance on their equipment. He was a nice guy and, and he told us what they're doing, trying to solve these problems. So after that, um, the other person went around and took some videos in the same location that the, the person that had complained, they were, I think the person that complained about the light noise that uh, Wednesday night, the, the night prior was on Worthington Ridge there above the Ford dealer, actually above the cinemas. So we didn't hear that noise on several different nights, um, and we didn't see much on social media either, which is a good thing, so I don't know. And he said they were gonna kind of operate that way for a while, lower the velocity of the fan, which would hopefully change the pitch, so. You know, and we talked about a couple of the things they're, they're doing, of course. So that was kind of a positive. The odor still has been around. I mean, I've smelled the tail a little bit, uh, and the other thing is there, uh, Jonathan, the president, I, I think he met with you, right? We're, we're trying to get that variance for him to raise the stack, right?
That was Molly.
Okay, good. Yeah, right. Okay, good. Oh, is it tonight? Oh, good, okay. So I, I know they're anxious that even the, the plant manager there, Dan, said they were anxious to get that going. They're ready to do that too, once they get the variance from the town. So that's, that's a good thing. And we talked a little bit about the thermal oxidizer too. He, he's, the, the manager is very experienced. He's been in different plants such as this with different products that are being made, so he's pretty experienced with some of these issues. And he said the, you know, the oxidizer said that's the, you know, that's the gold standard, so that should be coming as quick as they could get it here, so. Some positive things, which, which, which is good. Um, so anyway, I just want to make sure we're, you know, we are keeping up on that. The town is, uh, myself, Donna, you know, we're all trying to pay attention to this and I think we're going down the right road, so. That's that. Um, nothing else right now, so we'll go ahead and, uh, move on to our consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to add an item for the consent agenda.
Yes.
A move to approve waiving the police traffic control fees in the estimated amount, amount of $400 for the Powderpuff Flag football fundraiser that will take place November 26th, 2024 at Sage Park Police Field.
Okay, uh, second. All right, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, right, so moved. Um, all right, so we've got our consent agenda items. We have this one on here. I know we've read them before. No other, uh, questions? We will go ahead and take a motion for a consent agenda.
Move, we accept the, the agenda as presented.
Thank you, second.
Second thought.
Thanks. Uh, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, right, so moved. Oh, and I'm sorry, one last, I'm just gonna, sorry, skip back to the mayor's update, forgot. Uh, we, we're gonna engage this, uh, sound engineer too. Um, yeah, Jeff knows of this gentleman very well, respected around the country, not just here in Connecticut. He's in Connecticut and Milford. So we just have to start, uh, Jeff started a conversation. I'll, I'll speak to him as well. We want him to look at, remember, we want him to look at the, um, the test, the results of that test and, you know, once we see what he says about that, we'll, we'll, I think engage him with some other things with the, with the noise as well, so. Um, another positive there for Brightfeed's not, not gonna forget about that. We're gonna get it done, so anyway. Okay, so on to our new business.
Go ahead. Authorized town manager to sign three-year agreement with OpenGov, Vertosoft, the cloud-based procurement software.
Okay. So what, uh, what, what, so what are, what are we talking about here? Is this new Kevin? It's Kevin? Oh, here it is. Mister Kevin.
Hi, good evening.
How are you?
I'm all right, how are you? Um, this motion is to move from our current manual RFP process to a cloud-based program. It is a three-year proposal and it would allow some notable benefits for the town. Uh, first, our RFP process today relies on individuals generally going to the website and pulling the information. This would actually be cloud-based and would allow anyone who is registered on the OpenGov platform to be able to see and respond to any of our RFPs, so it broadens our universe substantially. Um, it would also allow us to review, respond to questions, open RFPs and store bid, uh, or awarded RFPs online. It would allow for far greater access for file sizes. Today, our website does have some file size limitations. Normally that doesn't prevent us, but sometimes we've had bids, especially when you get into more extensive construction projects that are just too large in size. We end up having to send files or zip drives or have people come into town hall and pick up their items. And finally, it would allow us to open bids online. So not only is that more convenient today, but as we saw during COVID or if there was some other business interruption event, it would allow for continuation of all of our services as we move forward. Um, today, our process utilizes Word and Excel, which are perfectly fine programs. This would allow for a more consistent platform. It would allow for anybody within the town to establish an RFP to be able to see the questions, respond to the questions, make those responsible, responses available to anyone who is registered to participate. And it would also provide us something that we don't have today, which is visibility to anyone who has downloaded or looked at the information so that we would have an opportunity to follow up, should they choose not to bid, to potentially understand why they're not bidding and become more intelligent in our bid process as we go forward. Uh, it's a three-year program. It requires some upfront cost for the programming. They actually have, um, considerable experience with communities in Connecticut as well as nationwide. Takes about five months in total. It would allow us to load current vendors, current contracts, as well as begin to house contracts, which could also give us visibility into contract expiration dates to mitigate the instances where we're coming back in a hurry to renew and be able to go out to bid sooner in the process. And, um, again, it would be a three-year deal that would provide us this opportunity going forward.
Okay. Um, questions, folks?
Yeah, Kevin, one question here. What happens after the end of the third year? Is it, uh, we go back? We want to continue using this? It's a renewal or what happens afterwards?
It is a renewal. Um, we are using Sourcewell, so it's national contract pricing. Uh, they're actually giving us a 10% discount off of the Sourcewell pricing, so not only are we using that pricing, but assuming we sign up before December 1st, they're actually discounting the Sourcewell pricing. And we would re-up at that point. We have an option of one year, three-year or five-year terms. Uh, we didn't want to go one year because a five-month investment to use it for potentially seven months and then renegotiate didn't seem right. But we also didn't want to get locked into a five-year agreement so that if we find after a year that this is not what we expected, we're not benefiting the town, that we would be locked in for another three or four years. So we chose the middle ground at this point. If it works well, we could sign up for, um, you know, we could sign up for a longer period if that's what we decide to do.
Thank you.
Um, anybody, Kevin, have you checked with other surrounding towns or, you know, what?
We have in every town that we, our purchasing agent, Marissa, actually reached out to several towns and every town spoke very highly of it. Uh, they found it to be easy to use. Uh, we did look at a competing software platform that initially was slightly less expensive. However, they limited it to three users. This has unlimited users, so we would be able to provide access to public works, facilities, the Board of Education, uh, not just finance and others. Um, and every one of them has found this to be useful. They found it easy to use. The responses were much, um, easier to follow and it provides considerably more history than what we have today. If you've ever tried to comb through a website and look at a series of Word documents or Excel documents, you're kind of combing all the way through. This would actually allow you to see the bid and then click into every addendum, every question, every response, but be able to do it in a much cleaner, easier approach.
You heard of this, Lee? Have you? Yeah. Okay. Standard, okay.
Do we, do we anticipate this saving, you know, hours or days or, you know, as far as towards FTEs? Like what's the, I, I guess the better way to ask is what the return on the investment is.
I think there's going to be a couple of, of areas where I would see return. One is certainly savings. Right now it is completely manual, so you're talking about individuals filling out Word documents, exchanging it back and forth. Um, the, the second area, I think, is the broader universe. Today they have over 7,000 vendors registered and it's growing consistently, so. As I said at the beginning, we, we have, we have to rely on folks who go to our website. Um, we can post some larger items on the DAS website. Uh, we certainly put it in the newspaper, but I think we can all agree that that's probably not the best way to capture a broad audience. Um, so this now provides a tool of this nature to folks who are already using it with surrounding communities, who may not be aware of some of the things we're bidding on in Berlin and be able to attract others, which can translate into potentially cost savings for individual projects.
Other, try.
As a vendor, I've used this with other towns. It's very helpful. It's very hard to find out what Berlin's looking for as a vendor unless word of mouth. I mean, there's no newspaper to look in. Years ago, you had the Dodge report and the local newspapers. There were other avenues, but um, unless you're looking at a specific town's website, you don't find it. So this will, I think, get us a lot more competition for our projects.
Okay, that's good to hear. Um, and the funding, where's our funding coming from?
This is going to be, uh, the initial funding, so the onboarding as well as year one will come from the Business Continuity Fund. Uh, we typically do use this as we try to move to a more resilient environment and more responsive. Going forward, years two and three will be funded into the finance budget as we did with the automated payroll system, as we do with our accounting system and others.
Okay. All right, you good, folks? We good?
Thank you.
Pretty good, okay. All right, well, uh, go ahead and take a motion on this.
Move to authorize the interim town manager to sign a three-year agreement up to a total cost of $124,201 with OpenGov Vertosoft for the purchase of a cloud-based procurement software utilizing Sourcewell contract number two, one, one, I'm sorry, number 121923 dash SHI.
Take a second.
Second thought.
All right, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Posed, right, so moved.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, item two is to request to waive the bidding process to the Carlson Systems and Gray's three words together.
Well, he's up here, he, he's moving.
Ray, he's moving fast tonight. There we go, Ray. How we going? How's it going, Ray?
Memo, we're trying to.
Every two years we try to go out to bid for emergency services and we did this year in September, tried to do, catch it early. We currently have Earth Contractors and Butler. Um, Butler has basically told us that so many times that they're not available, so Earth Contractors has been our main entity to go to for services. We went out to bid in September, they were the only bidders, uh, so we basically accepted their bid. Uh, we are to go back out there, we have, and basically it's funny, after Kevin's presentation, we're looking at another RFP and trying to, uh, get get seven or more contractors out there to try to get the bid for backup because, um, Earth is pretty spread thin. They do work for Regional Water Authority now. They do it for Cromwell and Southington and a couple of other towns. And, uh, and Andy, Andy Rubiak, uh, is the fire chief and that first fire I went out to the Hawthorne in that, that night and he's there fighting the fire in the middle of the night, so, uh, he's spread, spread pretty thin. I mean, they do a great job and that's, and that's the thing. So we wanted to, uh, award the Earth Contractors for the primary bidder and then we're looking for a backup bidder, so coming back probably in December for the backup bidders.
Um, this agenda items for the pump, could you talk about the pump?
You want me to do the pump at the same time?
There seems to be, I, I apologize.
Depends, yeah.
Was it rearranged? I'm, I'm not sure. I have, I have two as the Earth Contractors.
I'm sorry.
Three.
I have three.
Yeah, they're just, they're just numbered, they're just numbered wrong.
Talk to either one if you like.
No, that's fine.
Let's do, let's do.
So I wouldn't do it.
It's not a big deal.
No problem.
Go either way.
No, it's fine.
So we'll follow the agenda.
Okay.
Sorry.
The agenda can never be wrong, right?
That's what I worked at.
That's why it's not wrong. Okay, there we go. Okay, that's what I mean, see? Yes, you can.
Move for award contract number 2025 dash O2, routine repairs, emergency repairs and minor construction of water and sanitary source systems in the amount of $170,750 to Earth Contractors.
I will second that.
Thank you. Any other, uh, comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Posed.
But thank you, and I had one more thing.
Yes.
Earth is pretty much kept the contract amount for the same amount for the last three years, so I think it's pretty good, so.
Good, great. All right, so now we're on number. Ray, you're up.
Again.
Ray, again. And you're up.
Uh, we finally finished the Demming Road Pump Station and we've completed that. And when I was reviewing the records and I, I, and the original design and the original specifications, there was an additional pump that was reconquered. We went through a three-pump to a two-pump system. It works very well. The two pumps are very excellent. However, I'd like to have a pump on the shelf because one of these things, if one of these pumps goes down, the lead time or lag time, if you want, which way you want to look at it, it takes about six to eight weeks to order another pump. And that makes it a pretty difficult time to operate with one pump. Uh, the irony here is, is that Nickerson did it. Nickerson was an excellent contractor for us, uh, did a wonderful job. And they ordered all the materials, uh, two years ago during the, what is, during the supply chain issue. The pumps actually cost more at the time. Uh, the two pumps cost 115,000. This time around, it's only 38,000 for one.
Oh, that's better. That sounds better.
So in waiting, we actually saved some money, which is hard to believe, but.
Oh, that is hard to believe in today's world, yeah. Yeah. There we go.
We only had one change order for $5,000 and, and we pretty much, uh, finished the project on, on budget, on time.
Awesome.
Great, that's great, Ray. Thanks.
Very.
All right, uh, any other questions for Ray? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to waive the town bidding process to purchase a spare pump from Carlson LLC for the Demming Road Pump Station, the amount of $38,350, but this is in the best interest of the town.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, right, so moved.
Hey, thank you.
All right, thanks, Ray, same to you, Ray. See ya. Okay, so we're on to appointments. Wow, wow, that's pretty quick, huh? Okay.
Your first one would be for Matta Bassett.
Yes. Yes. So we'll go ahead and, uh, uh, open the nominations, make a nomination.
I would like to nominate Mr. Nicholas Stevens.
Second on that nomination.
Second thought.
Thank you.
You don't need.
That's right, that's right, I'm sorry. Um, no other nominations for, well, are there any other nominations? We don't hear any, so we'll close the nominations and, uh, we'll pick a vote on Mr. Nicholas, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved.
Your next one would be number seven, for the Building, Public Building Commission.
Yes, well, uh, so nominations are open, we'll take a nomination for, uh, Mr. Hincliff.
I would like to nominate Mr. J. Stephen Hincliff, Jr., for the Building Commission, Public Building.
Thank you for that. Uh, any other nominations? Hearing none, we're gonna close the nominations, and, uh, we'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved.
And that comes out number fifteen, he would be the youth service, I'd be, uh, service commissioner.
Okay. All right, uh, so we have a nomination for that, any other, uh, nominations on that posi- that appointment? Hearing none, uh, we'll close the nominations, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay there, Mr. Town Attorney?
That's our mic. That's our mic, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah, so that's good.
All right.
Okay, so we are, oh, what do I, so we're down to the, uh, town manager's report, right?
There you go.
Wow, that's fast.
I will, per usual.
We're all very hungry for turkey, I know it's a couple of days away, but we still want to get there early, yeah.
I'll just, uh, one of the things that I wanted to accomplish here was to, uh,
Buy the gym equipment for the police department? Uh, we might, might get that done before you go.
Was to update the Employment Guide project, which has been completed and updated and, uh, distributed at this point to all employees. It had legal review and past muster, so that's a good thing, because it's gonna help with our auditors and our insurers as well, so.
That's good, thank you, appreciate that.
That's all.
That's it?
Bigger and.
Well, that's a lot of work, yeah. Glad you got that done.
Thank you.
Yes, um, okay, where are we at? Special committee reports? Is that, is that what our, uh, our town calendar is for the, that, that, the committee did meet?
Yes, the committee.
Did they get along with each other?
It was a little contentious.
Was it? It was tough?
Came to an agreement.
That's good. Yes, it's a large committee of one for our, yeah, for our, our audience, yes, but they don't get along with each other a lot, so.
Correct.
Yes.
A lot of arguing.
Yes.
So a draft is in your packet, um, if you want to take a look at that, you know, go against your own, um, calendars. Uh, hopefully I didn't miss anything. Um, hopefully we can vote on it in our December meeting. Um, it was amended, uh, there was one error on the original one that, uh, sent out for January, it said the twenty-third instead of the twenty-first. Um, and after hearing some comments about today's meeting, you know, looking in November.
Yeah.
It's, it's a local election next year, so you have election day, then the swearing-in ceremony.
Right.
And we wouldn't have a meeting until after that ceremony, so that's why it is.
That's there.
Week.
Yeah.
That month, so.
That's all right.
To keep that in mind.
Yeah, that's okay. All right, so we'll vote on it in, in December. Questions, folks? Well, I mean, we'll look at it, right? You guys could look at your calendars and see if this works.
You yourself and I.
Yeah. Yeah, thank, thank the rest of the, thank the other members of your committee later, when you see them, yeah. Any, I don't think there was any other committees, right? Nothing else. Matt, uh, Council of Communications. Where are we at? Anybody?
Silence is cool.
Silence is a good thing tonight, yes.
Friends' football team did win the championship.
Oh.
They got a mountain bag champion.
Excellent, excellent.
So we'll get them in here.
So, yes, we should.
Yep.
Should. We'll work. Yeah, we'll work on that. Let's work on that, um. Nothing to say? Mark, that's unlike you. What, you gotta be pounding the table for something here, come on. That's okay, we're good, we're good, we appreciate it. Okay, we're good, so on to our acceptance of minutes.
Move we accept the minutes of the November twelfth meeting.
All right, thank you, second on that. Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, all right, so moved. All right, and we are into our, uh, executive session.
Move.
I'm gonna have to explain to Trent what it, what an executive session is.
Yes.
So there are certain matters that the town council, council can't talk about in front of the public, and you're a member of the public, so you're gonna have to sit in the hallway for like fifteen, twenty minutes.
If that.
Right.
Nah, probably not that long.
It won't be that long, but you can't, you can't be in here while we talk about it, unfortunately, okay? I will. All right, will you go sit out there for me? Thanks, bud.
Would you close the doors while you're here?
So we had, we had a second on that, right? So, right, all those in favor, aye? Lee and. And Randy.
We need a town attorney.
Well, we'll see you in a minute, yeah. Yeah, don't, don't go. Don't go anywhere, yeah. All right.
So is Randy gonna call in? Does she have the number?
Who?
Randy.
Randy's on.
She's there, right? Oh, we gotta call in.
Oh, that's right.
Figure out the number without you, so. Thank you. Thanks, Trent.
Doing a heck of a job. Yes, I think he should get.
Yeah, it's funny, trust me.
She got the same, she should get the same salary we do.
Is that right? I know.
He could have mine.
Okay.
Yes.